We'll call the meeting in order now.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear you? You there, George? Hello, George?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good. In accordance with 940 CM-
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, George. In accordance with 940 CMR 29 dot 10, remote participation adopted-
Okay, you can hear me now.
We can hear you, George. Adopted by the Greater Lowell Technical School Committee April 17, 2014. Committee men O'Hare and student representative Karen Vinyl will be participating at tonight's meeting remotely. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Mr. Marin?
Yeah.
Mr. O'Hare?
George, you there?
Roll call, Mr. O'Hare.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yeah.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yeah.
Mr. Getchia?
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu? Mr. Tatzias?
Here.
Mr. Gigi?
Here.
Public appearance, we're going to be suspending the public appearance portion and going right into the meeting. Are there any school committee communications? All right, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to the student representative Karen Vinyl to give the student report. You there, Karen?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you're on.
During Lowell competed in the Skills USA Massachusetts State Leadership and Skills Conference throughout the month of April, 60 students representing all grade levels participated in technical and leadership events. We are proud to announce that during the virtual awards ceremony, on Thursday, May 6th, 17 students received medals in 11 competition areas. Junior Stefani Ung from marketing earned a gold medal in customer service and has qualified to compete at the Skills USA national competition being held remotely in June. In addition, for the sixth consecutive year, Greater Lowell was selected as a gold chapter of distinction, and for the fifth consecutive year, our chapter has been selected as a national model of excellence. Senior Samantha Barnes, chapter vice president from cosmetology, and junior Trina Tran, chapter secretary for medical assisting, will be presenting our program at the national conference in June. The senior class will be hosting a senior night to remember on Friday, May 21st as an alternative prom event. This will be an outdoor evening event for seniors of the class of 2021. This event will include a red carpet walkthrough and allow students the opportunity to dress up and come together in a socially-distanced gathering. The night will include a catered dinner and a comedy show. The Anime Club has been watching a series of anime movies and having discussions about choices people make and the reasons why they do what they do. Their meetings have been very interactive. And the Guided Bible Club has been focusing on famous passages from the Book of Proverbs, and members chose proverbs which were inspirational to them. They shared their proverb with club members and commented as to what the proverb meant and why it had an impact on them personally. Club members also translated the proverbs into everyday language so everyone could understand their true meaning. USA has had a busy month touching on different topics. For starters, a meeting was held on World Venom Day, which led to discussions on sexual assault awareness. One student took the lead with this discussion and found World Venom Day to be of great importance in society, and members made a commitment to themselves to help spread awareness. In addition to this, the students discussed the Safe Schools Program for LGBTQ students and its relevance to policy and influencing change. Lastly, they continued their ongoing discussions regarding transgender rights and how policy is making their way through legislature in other states, especially with how it pertains to athletes. Their mentoring has been spending some time reflecting. They have been looking back at the school year and how their relationships between mentors and mentees has changed as they have become more comfortable with each other. They will be surveying the students for ways to improve the program as well as what they should keep doing. And in athletics, this year's abbreviated spring season is underway, with hundreds of student athletes competing for the griffins. Girls lacrosse, softball, baseball, boys volleyball, and boys track have all started this year strong with winning records. Tennis, girls track, and boys lacrosse continue to work hard and also hope to see success in their upcoming contests. Additionally, this very unique spring wrestling campaign will get underway this weekend with the Griffin Grapplers taking on Whittier this Saturday.
Thank you, Karen. Nice job.
Thank you, Karen.
It will less be Karen's last meeting, do you know?
No, she'll be coming till the June.
Okay.
Can we, approval of the minutes? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for April 15?
Second.
Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Marin?
Yeah.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yeah.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
On to the report of the treasurer. Can I have a motion to waive the reading?
So moved.
Can I have a call of the roll, please?
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yeah.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to approve the expenditures of $5,241,963.33?
So moved.
Second.
Can I have a call of the roll, please?
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias? Mr. Gigi?
Yes. On to the report of the general counseling. Is there any? Not this evening? That leaves us on to the superintendent's report, and we're going to turn it over to Madam Superintendent Hill.
Thank you, Chairman. First on my agenda this evening is the recognition of our top 10 students of the class of 2021, and I would like to extend my sincere congratulations to all of these students and their families, the students for demonstrating academic and technical excellence and earning the honor of being the top in their graduating class. I would like to invite Assistant Superintendent Principal, Mr. Michael Barton, to recognize the top 10 students of the graduating class of 2021.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. Good evening, everyone.
Can you move to the side?
Good evening.
My pleasure to introduce to you the top 10 students of the class of 2021. Our 10th-ranked student is Patrick Sexton. Patrick Sexton is the son of Joan Malia Sexton of Lowell. Patrick is ranked 10th in the class of 2021. Patrick's technical program of study is programming and web, where he has earned multiple certifications. He's maintained a rigorous course of studies, which includes honors, classes, dual enrollment, and advanced placement courses. Patrick's school and volunteer activities include the Math Club, Project Purple, National Technical Honors Society, Skills USA, peer tutoring, senior committee, robotics club, and the Bay State Marathon in 2019. Patrick is also the recipient of several awards and scholarships, including 2017 and 2018 Perfect Attendance, 2019 Skills USA State Third Place Medal Chapter Display, 2019 US History II Honors Award, 2018 and 2019 Perfect Attendance, 2020 Skills USA District First Place in IT Services, 2021 Skills USA District's Placement in IT Services. He is also the recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship and the Dean Scholarship at the University of Massachusetts Lowell. Patrick plans to attend the University of Massachusetts Lowell to pursue a degree in computer science. He plans to further his education with a master's degree in computer science while working as a software engineer. He, excuse me, he would also like to consider a possible endeavor in computer science education. The 10th-ranked student of the class of 2021, Patrick Sexton. Samantha Barnes. Samantha Barnes is the daughter of Jada Jean and Scott Barnes of Drakken. Samantha is ranked 9th in the class of 2021. Samantha's technical program is cosmetology. Samantha has maintained a rigorous course of studies, which include dual enrollment, honors, and advanced placement courses. Samantha's school and community service activities include Greater Lowell Technical High School Track and Field, Skills USA, National Honor Society, National Technical Honor Society, Summer Service Learning Program, Drama Club, National Society of High School Scholars, and Girl Scouts. Samantha is also the recipient of the following awards: Cosmetology Outstanding Achievement, Cosmetology Under 500 Hours In-Place Second Place, Cosmetology Aesthetics In-House First Place, Workplace Skills Case Study Second Place, Leadership and Proactive Award, the Shot Put Second Place for freshman-sophomore meet, the Discus Fifth Place at the League Meet, and a $10,000 Academic Achievement Scholarship for the Fashion Institute of Technology in New York City. Samantha plans to attend the Fashion Institute of Technology in New York City, majoring in fashion merchandising. She plans to work within the fashion industry as a public relations specialist and an advocate for sustainability. The number-one 9th-ranked student in the class of 2021, Samantha Barnes. To Do. To Do is the daughter of Tuan Du and Ben Nugan of Lowell. To is ranked 8th in the class of 2021. To's technical program is programming and web, where she has earned multiple certifications. She has maintained a rigorous course of study, which includes dual enrollment, advanced placement, and honors classes. To's school and community service activities include National Technical Honor Society, National Honor Society, Skills USA, the Math Club, peer tutoring, robotics club, and she was a food bank volunteer. To is the recipient of the following awards and scholarships: the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, High Honor Roll, Skills USA Leader Award, Skills USA In-House First Place Mobile Robotics Award, and the Quest Bridge National College Match Scholarship. To plans to attend Wellesley College on a full scholarship, which she plans on a double major of education in computer science. To hopes to be a teacher or university lecturer after working in the tech industry. The number-8 ranked student in the class of 2021, To Do. Janice DeJesus. Janice DeJesus, the daughter of Angel and Janita DeJesus of Lowell. She is ranked 7th in the class of 2021. Janice's technical program of study is medical assisting. She has maintained a rigorous course of study, which includes honors courses. Janice maintains a cooperative education position at CBS, where she is employed as a pharmacy technician. Janice's school and volunteer activities include Project Purple, Skills USA, the annual church cleanup, spiritual community service, and tutoring. Janice is the recipient of the following awards: Perfect Attendance, High Honor Roll, Special Recognition in English Honors, and Second Place in the School Science Fair. After graduation, Janice plans to directly enter the workforce. She states, "With my certification, I wish to stay in the medical field and use my knowledge to become a medical assistant or participate in humanitarian service work." The number-7 ranked student in the class of 2021, Janice DeJesus. Kaitlyn Sullivan. Kaitlyn Sullivan is the daughter of Lori Sullivan of Lowell. Kaitlyn is ranked 6th, excuse me, Kaitlyn is ranked 6th in the class of 2021. Kaitlyn's technical program is health assisting. She has maintained a rigorous course of study, which includes honors, advanced placement, and dual enrollment courses. Kaitlyn maintains a cooperative education position at CBS in North Villarica, where she is employed as a pharmacy technician. Kaitlyn is a member of Skills USA, National Technical Honor Society, National Honor Society, and the sophomore class committee. Kaitlyn's community and volunteer activities include peer tutoring, the team walk for cancer, school flower sales, the Bay State Marathon, and the food drive in 2019. Kaitlyn is the recipient of the following awards: Skills USA Perfect Score on the District Safety Test, Skills USA Third Place on District Basic Health, Student of the Month, OSHA Certification, and CPR First Aid Certified. Kaitlyn plans to pursue an undergraduate degree at the University of Massachusetts Lowell in nursing. Her future plan is to become a pediatric nurse. The number-6 ranked student in the class of 2021, Kaitlyn Sullivan. Karen Vinyl. Karen Vinyl is the daughter of Janet and Steve Vinyl of Tinsborough. Karen is ranked 5th in the class of 2021. Karen's technical program is computer-aided drafting. She has maintained a rigorous course of study, which includes honors, dual enrollment, and advanced placement courses. Karen maintains a cooperative education position at Nodone Electrical as a CAD assistant. Karen's school and community activities include National Technical Honor Society, National Honor Society, Skills USA, and the Greater Lowell Technical High School Varsity Swim and Dive Team. Karen is an active member of the local racing community. Karen is also a recipient of the following awards: John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, Skills USA Stake Gold Medal in Principles of Engineering and Technology, Skills USA National Bronze Medal in Principles of Engineering and Technology, and Student of the Month. Karen plans on attending the University of Massachusetts Lowell to pursue a degree in mechanical engineering. Her future plan is to continue working in the field of mechanical engineering past college graduation. The number-5 ranked student in the class of 2021, Karen Vinyl. Sarah Toth is the daughter of Terry Norton and Steve Toth of Lowell. I'm sorry, excuse me. Sarah Toth. Sarah Toth is the daughter of Terry Norton and Steve Toth of Lowell. Sarah is ranked 4th in the class of 2021. Sarah's technical program is programming web, where she has earned multiple certifications. She has maintained a rigorous course of studies, which includes dual enrollment, advanced placement, and honors courses. Sarah's school and community activities include National Technical Honor Society and National Honor Society. Sarah also volunteers at St. Paul's Meals. Sarah is the recipient of the following awards and scholarship: the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, Honor and High Honor Roll, and the Dean Scholarship at UMass Lowell. Sarah plans to attend the University of Massachusetts Lowell, majoring in computer science. In the future, she hopes to have a job where she can provide for her family and work from home. The number-4 ranked student in the class of 2021, Sarah Toth. Billy Chin. Billy Chin is the son of Robert Swaye and Pratna Chin of Lowell. Billy is ranked number 3 in the class of 2021. Billy's technical program is programming web, where he's earned multiple certifications. He has also maintained a rigorous course of study, which includes advanced placement and dual enrollment courses. Billy is a member of the National Technical Honor Society, National Honor Society, and Skills USA. Billy's community and volunteer activities include the Bay State Marathon and the Greater Lowell Technical High School Flower Sale. Billy is the recipient of the following awards: the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, 2019 Outstanding Student in Programming Award, 2018 Outstanding Student in World History College Prep, and the Dean Scholarship at University of Massachusetts Lowell. Billy plans to attend the University of Massachusetts Lowell, majoring in computer science. He hopes to someday pursue a career in cybersecurity or data science. The number-3 ranked student in the class of 2021, Billy Chin. Zachary Varzea. Zachary Varzea is the son of Jack Kline and Joaquin Varzea of Tinsborough. Zachary is ranked number 2 and is the salutatorian in the class of 2021. Zachary's technical program is programming and web development, where he's earned multiple certifications. He has also maintained a rigorous course of study, which includes advanced placement, honors, and dual enrollment courses. Zachary is a member of Skills USA. He is also the recipient of the bronze medal in the area of computer science for Skills USA. He received the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship and the Dean Scholarship to University of Massachusetts Lowell. Zachary plans to pursue an undergraduate degree in computer science at the University of Mass Lowell. His future plans are to pursue a career with either child protective services or in computer science. The number-2 ranked student and a salutatorian of the class of 2021, Zachary Varzea. Lexi Cotto. Lexi Cotto is the daughter of Ifrin Cotto and Carrie Julia of Lowell. Lexi is ranked number 1 and is the valedictorian of the class of 2021. Lexi's technical program is health assisting. She has maintained a rigorous course of study, which includes honors, dual enrollment, and advanced placement courses. Lexi is a member of Skills USA, the National Honor Society, of which she is the president, student council, Greater Lowell Technical High School Volleyball, Indoor and Outdoor Track, Cross Country, and Swim and Dive. Lexi's community and volunteer activities include freshman orientation, participating in the Welcome Back video for the reopening plan, peer tutoring, peer mentoring, Bay State Marathon volunteer, school flower sales representative, Helping Hands, which provides assistance to families in needs during Thanksgiving, soup kitchen at St. Margaret's Church volunteer, and the End 68 Hours of Hunger Drive. Lexi is the recipient of the following awards and sports awards: Skills USA First Place In-House Competition Sophomore and Junior Year, Honors English Outstanding Achievement for Two Years, Honors History Outstanding Achievement for Two Years, Dual Enrollment Chemistry Special Recognition Award, Honors Biology Outstanding Achievement, High Honor Roll, Student of the Month, Indoor Track Meet Most Improved, Indoor-Outdoor Track Coaches' Award, Volleyball Coaches' Award, and the Scholar-Athlete Award. Lexi plans to pursue an undergraduate, excuse me, undergraduate degree at Westfield State University in Nursing, where she has been awarded the Presidential Scholarship. Her future plan is to work to obtain a master's degree and specialize in pediatric oncology. She eventually would like to earn a second master's degree in education and become a nurse educator. The number-1 ranked student and the valedictorian of the class of 2021, Lexi Cotto. Congratulations to all of the top 10 students in the class of 2021. Thank you.
Amazing accomplishments.
So, the next item on my agenda is the Cooperative Education Student of the Year Awards, and I would like to congratulate these students for demonstrating outstanding performance at their cooperative education placements. And now, I would like to ask our Director of Cooperative Education, Ms. Stacy Bazanson, to come forward to acknowledge these students.
Good evening. Thank you, members of the school committee, Assistant Superintendent Principal, Mr. Barton, and Superintendent, Ms. Davis. Each year, the co-op office recognizes a student who has gone above and beyond on co-op. This year, I'm excited to announce that we are presenting this award to three students. Through criteria for this award is based on co-op attendance, co-op weekly reports, the length of time of being on co-op, and meeting all of the school co-op policies and procedures. After speaking to each of their co-op employers, all of these students exhibit strong technical skills, great attendance, they take initiative, they complete projects and tasks on time, work well with customers, peers, and supervisors, eager to learn new tasks, problem solve, and demonstrate a high level of professionalism. I am proud to announce the 2021 Co-op Students of the Year. From Automotive Technology, Diego Rivera; from our marketing program, Marissa Rutledge; and from our plumbing program, Dylan Force-Hood. These three students have demonstrated the necessary skills and the work ethic needed to be successful in the workplace. Thanks to all three of them for their continued hard work and dedication to the co-op program. Thank you, Ms. Bazanson.
Stacy, just thank you for what you did this year, because I know it's been tough with COVID and you keeping 100 students all getting employed. Because I know there's a lot of pinkness, this is working from home, and we actually, that hurt us a little bit, so.
It didn't. Yes, thank you.
Thank you for what you did this year.
Thank you for all your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, I'd like to ask Mrs. Bazanson to remain where she is, because the next item on our agenda is our Cooperative Education Report, and I'm happy that she's here tonight to be able to give that report. And I also would like to thank Mrs. Bazanson for all her hard work over the last year and a half, working with our students and our employers, overcoming the many challenges presented by this pandemic, and still being able to get our students the cooperative education experience. So, thank you, Stacy, for all your hard work. And now, you have the privilege of giving our Cooperative Education Report for the month of May.
Thank you. So, in your folders, you may see the as of April. As far as today, we have 137 students participating in the co-op program. 107 of those are seniors, which represents 20% of the class, and we have 30 juniors currently on co-op, which represents a little over 5% of the class.
Well done.
Thank you, Stacy, so much for all your hard work. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And congratulations to all of our Cooperative Education students of the year. It's a great privilege, and it's nice to see that they're representing our school in their knowledge and their skills in our communities and at the workplace. So, thank you to all the students, and congratulations to their families as well.
Thank you.
So, the next item on my agenda is an update on the after-dark programming for the 21-22 school year. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education recently approved our application to expand our after-dark programming, so I'm happy to say that next year, we will be including automotive technology in our after-dark programming with Lowell High School. And a copy of this letter is in your packet. The next item on my agenda, I would like to ask for the committee's approval to accept a $3,926 donation from the Greater Lowell Community Foundation Grant, which is made possible through the recommendation of donor-advised funds. Of these, of this $3,926 donated dollars, $1,000 was donated from the Merrimack Valley Rotary Club for the Lawrence L. Day Memorial Scholarship Fund for tools and scholarships, and the remainder of the funds was donated from the Mark and Alyssa Saab for the Greater Lowell Technical High School Student Activities Fund to provide annual support for students' activities. And a copy of this letter is included in your packet, and I would like to thank the Greater Lowell Community Foundation for their support each year, so thank you.
Thank you for approval to fund a donation.
Second.
Any discussion? We'd like to thank the charities that have donated to the cause, Merrimack Valley Rotary Club in the amount of $1,000, and Mark and Alyssa Saab, $29.26. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare? Mr. O'Hare?
Yeah.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Next on my agenda, I'd like to invite our Director of School Counseling Services, Ms. Tracy Onkarnasio, to summarize the recent changes to the homeless students' rights and services policy. And I will be asking for an approval after she summarizes the policy for all of you.
Thank you. Hello, Juan. Thank you for having me this evening. We follow the McKenney-Vento Law, which is our practice, as we receive clarification and updates from the state. And so, we reviewed the homeless policy, just to make sure that the policy actually does reflect the practice of Greater Lowell to promote educational stability for our homeless students. The significant changes were really just to the definitions and to really maybe create additional language that is added to further clarify the practice. So, for example, extracurricular activities and summer programming has been added. This is stuff that Greater Lowell has already always provided, but it was added to solidify the educational stability for homeless students and make sure they were able to participate in the full experience of their education. Awaiting foster care placement was something that was removed. Statements like transportation stations, which is how they previously listed. Places that students may be sleeping were clarified. Now, it says bus and train instead of transportation. School of origin was elaborated on, and that really just helps the students who are transitioning many times from elementary to middle, middle to high school, so that it's clear to the districts where the district of origin actually is. And like I said, additional language was added, just to clarify practice, clarifying immediate enrollment, and how we may assist families in getting records, because many times when students move and become homeless, they have difficulty in obtaining records, and so it really helps us clarify how we can help students get those, which I will say again, is practices Greater Lowell has always participated in, based on McKenney-Vento, but this was just a clarification of the language in the policy, per DUCI.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Onkarnasio?
Motion to approve.
No. Second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
George.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yeah.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, moving forward, the next item on my agenda, I'll be asking for approval of the revised close-contact portion of the fall reopening plan. On April 26th, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education updated the Close Contact Guidance, so we are updating our reopening plan to reflect this new guidance. Close contacts who were exposed to COVID-19 positive individuals in the classroom shop or on the bus, while both individuals are- in the classroom shop or on the bus, while both individuals are masked, do not have to quarantine unless they were within three feet of distance of the COVID-19 positive individual for a total of 15 minutes during a 24-hour period. This does not apply if someone was identified of a close contact outside of the classroom or the bus, for example, sports, extracurriculars, and lunch, or if masks are not worn by both persons at the time of the exposure. All other close contacts must follow the standard protocol for when a close contact may return to school. So I'm asking for your approval to revise the reopening plan to reflect this new guidance on close contacts.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hear? Mr. O'Hear?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda, I'll be asking for approval for the 2021, I'm sorry, 2021-2022 school calendar. A copy of the proposed calendar is included in your packet. And does anyone have any questions regarding the school calendar?
Motion to approve.
For the 2021-2022 school year.
Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a call of the roll, please.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hear? Mr. O'Hear?
George.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias?
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Moving forward, the next item in my report, I'm seeking the committee's approval to support the decision to participate in school choice for the 2021-2022 school year as outlined in our current admissions policy. Annually, each school district is responsible for submitting a decision on whether or not they will participate in school choice. And it's time to make that decision. School choice, just to be clear, is subject to the availability of openings, and district residents would be given the priority of available openings. So I'm asking for your approval on school choice.
Second.
Any questions? Any discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hear?
George.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
And the final item on my agenda this evening is I'm asking for the committee's approval for four days of professional development for cosmetology instructor, Mrs. Deborah Legassi, to attend an out-of-state training in Elliott City, Maryland. The conference is called Texture vs. Race, is focused on textured hair services, which is part of the cosmetology frameworks, and is being held May 24 through May 26, including an individual training session after the conference closes for the members of the Massachusetts team. The conference is going to be fully funded through MAVA, therefore, there is no cost to the district, and this is including substitutes for, a substitute for Mrs. Legassi while she is attending the conference. So I'm asking your approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hear?
Hello.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you and your team for last night with the freshman virtual welcome to the school. It was done great. I saw Curtis on there. It was good.
So thank you, thank you all again for your support. We did have a well-attended, accepted students night, and I'd just like to send a thank you to Lisa Martinez and our Director of Technology and Enrollment and our Assistant Superintendent Principal, Mr. Michael Barton, who worked together to plan that event. And it was a very good event for our incoming eighth-grade students and our families to get to know us a little bit and what we're all about and to sort of ease some of their fears about transitioning to a new place. And we'll continue to keep in contact with them as we move through the summer. And we also are having a freshman welcome day at the end of July to welcome the freshmen here to Greater Lowell. So thank you to the entire team who participated last night, and thank you again to the committee for all your support and all our endeavors to make this a great place of learning for all of our students.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
We're on to the report of the business manager.
Well, glad you're all here tonight. Thank you. So I'll start with the first memo is asking for an approval to sell expired Chromebooks to our senior students. So when we issued Chromebooks in the, actually, beginning of COVID last year, we intentionally issued juniors and seniors the older models of Chromebooks that were available so that the students could maintain the device that they were given at the time through the rest of their career. Now, these devices are actually no longer going to be supported by Google into next school year, which means that the school would be sunsetting them anyway because we won't have unsupported devices on our network because there could be a slight security issue because they're not receiving updates frequently. These devices still do carry some life in them, though. They should make it another year, potentially two, sometimes three, depending. And a student could use them for college or work or just general use at home. And I did reach out to two reselling companies of technology and just asked to see what the market rate was, and both responded that they weren't interested because there's really no resale value when they're at the end of life like this. So they, really, for us, it's going to be a disposal or we could offer them to the seniors pending approval for purchase of the book for a dollar or so if they so choose.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Any questions?
I think it's a good use since there's really no other use for it.
Yeah.
Even the token of appreciation we're looking for, it's well worth it.
I think it's a no-brainer.
Yes.
Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hear? Mr. O'Hear?
George?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
All right. The next item on my agenda is a lengthy list of transfers here, most of which have to do with account cleanup toward the end of the year, moving around funds that were budgeted for overtime to the appropriate overtime accounts. At this point, we have a pretty good eye set on what has taken place through the year, what our projected expenses are through the end of the year, and where we might have had over or under expenses throughout the year. So we're just getting down to cleaning most of that up, and if there are any individual questions about any one particular line item, I'm happy to go into it.
I don't have any particular line item. Are there any, are there any individuals, ones that are shown here that stick out to you? Or is there some specific reason, maybe more of this year than last year? Or are you completely satisfied with it?
Is that a question for me? Sorry.
I think it was directed to you, Mike.
Yeah, I put them together, so I am satisfied with them. I will say this year, probably a little bit more activity than usual. There were a lot of COVID-related things where we had expenses in accounts that maybe went to grants that were gotten or received through the federal tax.
Assuming that's part of the added expense.
There's some of that.
I've seen on some of them. I don't want to name any names.
There's some of that. There's also a lot of savings that came with this COVID. Every time there was a leave or an absence and those types of things, inevitably, those ended up producing some level of savings because we weren't paying at 100% all the time, depending on the type of leave per the federal guidelines on how that all worked. So there were a number of moving parts this year, I think, that were a little bit different than most.
And there's also a few that we got reimbursed for too, right?
Yep.
That I believe.
Yep, some of the stuff where we got federal funding. So sometimes I was charging things in here, going over budget, knowing it was going to a grant later, and then as we were projecting through the end of the year, keeping that school spending in mind, sometimes I had to move money into certain accounts to fund those items. So I think this is a, part of the reason it's a lengthy list this time around. But I think most of this was pretty well in line. I don't think there was anything that really stuck out to me. There was a lot of new software and items that we had to purchase to make remote learning work midstream as we were going. But nothing, nothing that I was really shocked or nothing really took me by surprise as was.
No. I'm sure the pandemic had its share of import as far as what we had to do.
Oh, certainly.
Like I said, we were reimbursed for some, but I can see the initial expenditure made that was taken. Thank you.
So Mike, essentially, all of these expenditures that were kind of shifting around, they have to be spent on these particular issues, and they can't be applied to salaries or anything like that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
See, one of our items, hybrid car technology learning lab?
Yep, so we actually purchased like a half of a Toyota Prius. And they built and they mock it up with, you know, test scenarios, and the instructor actually, I believe, can run simulations through it because it comes embedded with software, so they could, you know, kill the electric motor and have the students figure out why we're firing on gas all the time or a number of different things. There was, there was some cool stuff that happened out in automotive this year, I think. They got a bunch of, a bunch of cool stuff.
Yeah, they do.
That is really cool. And we're getting a car for security?
We are. The current Crown Vic is, I think, finally about to go.
It's been his best days?
Yeah, it was, it's been in, it might be in automotive more than it's on the campus at this point. I think, I think it's actually currently in automotive even. It was out a couple weeks ago, and it's back in. It's just come to perpetual issues at this point. And in order to provide reliable transportation and obvious presence of security on campus, we opted for a vehicle that is going to actually mimic the Tinsborough Town Police vehicles, so we'll have a reliable transportation for that group, and we won't have everyone's personal vehicles parked at the gate as they're working.
Sounds like that was the best learning tool at the autotech shop. I was going to tell you.
They might keep it. They might keep it. Everything's breaking on it, so there's plenty to do.
Or they might retire it, just like our Chromebook.
I think it might go.
Okay, motion to approve.
So the transfers totaling $1,546 and $551.41.
Second.
Can I have a call of the roll, please?
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hear? Mr. O'Hear?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias?
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
It's on my agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Is there any old business that wants to come up, discuss? Any new business? Any committeemen motions? Any reports of any subcommittees? At this time, I'd like to move to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A.2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And I need a motion and hopefully a second. Can we make a motion to adjourn now so, after we come back, or do we have to wait after executive session?
Do we have to come back into open session?
Well, if we take any votes, we'll have to come back.
Yeah, we're looking for a vote.
Are you looking for a vote? Okay. That's why I asked. I wasn't sure.
Motion to, motion to.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hear?
Can he go in?
Mr. O'Hear?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias?
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to reopen the meeting for the purposes of a motion, and that is to make whole or equal the position of network computer specialist to equalize the job responsibilities. Do I have a motion?
Yeah. So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hear? Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
And then at this time, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias?
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.